All right. I call this meeting of the Mount Vernon Independent School District to order. Let the record show that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting has been duly called and posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. I need a motion to certify the agenda.
So.
Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Robert, all four. That's seven oh. I'll lead us in a prayer. Pray with me, please. God, thank you for bringing us here this evening, for the pretty weather that we had today. Lord, thank you especially for our staff and all those that take care of our students, be with our bus drivers and all those folks that are out gathering up our kids, those that are in ballgames doing different things, doing these extracurricular activities, be with these kids in these parades tonight, Lord, just helping them to be a blessing to somebody, some of these little kids that are watching them. And God, most of all, we pray that you give us wisdom, that you help us to make good decisions, best decisions for this district and these students and the people that work for us. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen? Okay. We're gonna have a couple of students help us with the pledge, so...
We have Mr. Jeremiah Rule and Casey Galloway. Would you two guys come up right here? Case, hey, Case, come up here and help us. You two guys stand right here and help us with our pledge tonight.
Jeremiah, we're gonna do the American flag first, and then after that, we'll turn and y'all can lead us in the Texas flag, so whenever y'all are ready.
Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here's the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one nation.
Hey, wait, you guys, okay, you'll stand right here. We'll come back, thank you. One of our folks to get a picture with these guys right here. You stand right here.
Absolutely.
Mr. Gray, please come do something.
Okay, so Jeremiah, he's a fourth grade...
What, hey? Is that a lady?
No, not. So Jeremiah is a fourth grade student at our elementary school, and he comes to class ready to learn. He's always respectful and willing to help his peers and teachers. And then we have Case Galloway. He's also always willing to help others. And a specific example was, just the other day, he helped a student at his table. She was having a hard time creating a spinner in science. They were studying physical changes, and he talked to the student, calmed them down, and was able to help her. And his teachers say he's an amazing student. So both these boys are great students, and we are glad to have them on our campus.
Very good. The lady in the red shirt, we're gonna picture.
One, two, three. Got it.
Guys, thank you for leading the pledges tonight. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
And at this time, Dr. McCullough, let's do some special recognitions.
All right. Um, we get to honor our campus support and Teachers of the Month. Always a good time of our meeting to be able to do so each month. So I will start first with our Campus Support Employee of the Month. And could I have Ms. Sarah Long to come down, please? So it says, um, the nomination for her says, "Sarah Long is deserving of Auxiliary Employee of the Month. She handles all student scheduling for 600-plus students. This is to be done by hand for each individual student at the elementary. She has been an advocate for our students' emotional and social needs. Her patience and compassion for our students is evident in her character lessons, counseling groups, and in every encounter with students and families. She can calm down the most escalated student in a matter of minutes and shares her strategies with others. Sarah's a superpower. She has always known when she is needed, the first one to jump in and help. She has worked hard to make our elementary PBIS program successful and is a lifelong learner as she searches for ways that she and her campus can make improvements. In addition, she brings dynamic ideas of how to increase our parent engagement. Recently, with her direction, we have been spotlighting careers during our morning meetings. She brings the positivity in her heart, and service-oriented disposition has helped transform our culture. She's a game changer." Our Campus Support Employee of the Month, Ms. Sarah Long. Congratulations. You wanna say anything?
It's much easier to talk to 600 students than...
Next, we will move to the Elementary Teacher of the Month. If I could have Ms. Jenny Hatley come forward, please. Says Ms. Hatley goes the extra mile to make sure her students are successful. Every decision she makes as an educator is student-centered. She is not only an advocate for her students, but parents too. Before the start of school, she hosted a parent night where she answered all questions and set her class up for success. She works hard and sets high expectations for her students and herself. She enjoys teaching her students using hands-on activities and technology to promote student engagement. She builds a positive culture within her classroom by greeting each student every morning. She is always willing to share ideas and help out anyone in need. Our Elementary Teacher of the Month, Ms. Jenny Hatley. Very good. Wanna say anything?
Thank you.
These teachers talk so much during the day, they just don't have much to say in the evening. Next, we will move to our Middle School Teacher of the Month. If we could have Ms. Leslie Butler come forward. Says Leslie has a love and passion for kids and their well-being. She cares deeply and works hard to help. She always works well with everyone around her. She is eager to assist anyone in any capacity to better our campus for student success. Leslie is constantly challenging herself to learn new things and better herself in whatever she is doing. She has stepped in this year as our middle school interventionist and is doing an amazing job identifying students who need additional support in both math and reading and supplying them with their individual supports. She is always willing to learn and assist in any capacity and volunteers to assist in any way she can. We are very blessed to have her on our campus. Our Middle School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Leslie Butler. Any words?
Okay.
Okay. Three for three on that, aren't we? All right. Next, we will have our High School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Marsha Rowminds. Says Ms. Rowminds has had an immediate and noticeable impact on the campus and our students since returning to Mount Vernon High School, where she retired in...
2015.
2015. So we are glad to have her back. Says she displays an incredible work ethic and has always seen working with students before and after school or spending countless hours outside of the normal day, just making sure she is prepared to deliver effective instruction. The planning and preparation pays off for our students as high-quality instruction is delivered to them every day in Ms. Rowminds' geometry classes. In addition to being a great teacher in the classroom, she handles the other nuances of the job effectively and efficiently. She can be counted on to do things correctly and on time. She communicates with administration and effectively collaborates with her peers. She is quick to share with colleagues and works to make everyone around her as successful as they can possibly be. In addition to all these things, Ms. Rowminds has been instrumental in helping to build campus morale. She has a positive attitude with students and other staff members and works hard to make Mount Vernon High School the very best it can be. You will see Ms. Rowminds support students with their extracurricular activities and participating in extra things such as decorating the hallways in the name of the school spirit. She has just been a tremendous asset to our campus, and we are thankful to have her back. We look forward to seeing the great things that our students will accomplish due to her influence, and she is more than worthy to be recognized as our Teacher of the Month. Mount Vernon High School Teacher of the Month, Ms. Marsha Rowminds. Now, if I could have all of you back up here real quick for one quick group picture with the board? Very good. Thank you, ladies. Congratulations. Mr. Ward, President, if you don't mind, is there possible that we could go out of order on the agenda just real quick? Mr. Glover, couldn't allow him to share his information with the board tonight. He's got the, he's got duties with the homecoming parade. If we could allow him to go out of order real quick. Sir, thank you.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate y'all moving me up here on the agenda. I get the pleasure of going downtown and participating in the festivities this afternoon. So Dr. McCullough asked us to come tonight and just kinda share an update on campus goals for the year, so that's what I'm gonna do, just gonna hit a few highlights. As you guys know, because you've seen, you've seen the data, the results that have been presented to you over the last few months, you know that one of the things we've been focusing on and continue to focus on is gonna be just trying to get our students to that MEEs and that Masters level of instruction in the classroom. So we really looked at it this year as a kind of a three-tiered approach to our goal setting. We talked a lot about this with our staff when they came back beginning of school. We came out with our overarching campus goals, which were essentially increasing MEEs and Masters on STAR test, and the secondary goal following that was about increasing attendance rate at high school, which you guys know is obviously a district, a district thing as well. So what we asked our teachers to do, we asked them to get together in departments and come up with department goals that supported our overall campus goals. And I'll just give you an example of that. Here's a couple of them that they came up with. So the math department this year, their stated goal is gonna be to make sure that the number of students already meets on the Algebra I EOC is at least 50%, which is quite the goal, but again, it aligns with our, it aligns with our campus goals as well. The other thing that they're gonna do is they're gonna look at working to increase the number of junior students to pass the math portion of the TSI to at least 40%. So that's just an example of how the department goals are supporting the campus goals this year. The third piece of that is we asked each individual teacher within their T-test goal setting that they have to do to come up with specific goals themselves that support both the department goals and the campus goals. So again, a three-tiered approach to that. So they've been doing that, and we've been talking about that a lot this year, and will continue to do that. I'm not even gonna go through all the goals that were written, but each department and each teacher has specific goals that support those overall campus goals that we're talking about. Just give you a few things that we're doing to kinda work through or work towards our overall campus goals, which again is increasing the level with MEEs and Masters and also increasing attendance. One thing that we're doing is that we are really pushing the idea with teachers that the assignments that we're giving in class are directly tied to the learning standards that they're tested on. And this has been a growing process over the last couple of years. We're having to learn how to make sure that the assignments that we're giving are exactly relatable to the depth and the rigor that they're being tested on, on those tests. So teachers are doing that, and they're also, whenever they put that assignment in the gradebook, they're putting the, the actual T or the standard in there that that's tied to. So again, it gives us as administration the ability to go in there and look at those assignments and say, okay, this teacher is, is, is gauging student learning based on, based on this T which they're actually gonna be tested on coming up. So that's the one, one of the things that we're doing. Really honing in on the fact that teachers need to make sure that students are at least 70% of their students are at Mastery before they move on to the next portion of the content. And Ms. Brown, who's our Assistant Principal for Curriculum, is really keeping a close eye on that this year. We're utilizing our leave time to do both intervention, not just intervention, but also acceleration. So what we'll do is we'll have some, let me just backtrack a second. We've got five teachers that are responsible for our STAR-tested subjects. We've given those teachers an extra 33 minutes a day in their schedule to do things like plan, look at data, and also do intervention and acceleration with those students that we're talking about. So Ms. Brown, along with those teachers, they'll be meeting periodically to come up with essentially, we call it tutorial groups, if you wanna call it that, but it's intervention and it's also acceleration. So we'll be looking to take those students that are on the cusp of reaching that MEEs and that Masters and giving them extra time to get there. And we'll also be taking those students who are on the cusp of being able to pass and making sure they get there, so it's a twofold approach there. Let's see. Also, the, the math teachers and the ELA teachers, they have a common planning time this year. Again, aimed at giving them plenty of time, plenty of time to communicate with each other, to collaborate with each other, and work towards that. The other goal that we talked about a lot is attendance, and I can tell you, at this point, when I looked it up a couple of days ago, we were over 95% attendance rate at the high school, so that's great. But also understand that we're still in the first six weeks, so a lot of things are gonna change. But so we're working hard on that. Some of the things you see going on with the school spirit and the hallway decorating, some of the things that we're doing right there is directly aimed at that. The idea being that if kids wanna come to school because fun things are going on and interesting things are happening, then that's gonna help with attendance. So we're working hard at that, bringing back some school spirit, things that we've done in the past that have kinda fallen by the wayside the last couple of years. Mr. Hammond is working hard on attendance. He's doing a, he's already started doing home visits this early in the year, which is something that has not happened as frequently as needed to the last couple of years. I've asked for increased involvement with student council, NHS. We've got a student, we've got a, I'm calling it a school spirit committee, which is us, just some kids that we're bringing together of all grade levels that we're gonna work with, just coming up with some different ideas, fun things to do that are gonna make them interested in being here. But I think the biggest thing of all is having those engaging classrooms. That's what makes kids want to come to school. I mean, we, we see that most kids want to learn. They want to learn, they wanna be here if they're engaged in that classroom, so especially in the CTE world, just really driving on the point that we want hands-on activities, we want things that are fun and interesting that make kids wanna come to school. So I know that was a lot in a very short amount of time, but again, the two main goals, increasing achievement on that STAR test at the MEEs and Masters level, and then also driving on the fact that we need kids at school and continuing to help with the district initiative there. So those are the two main goals. Okay? Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Thank you. Number three. Okay. Move on to item three, open forum for public comments. So there's some different rules and things that's going on now than in the past, and we kinda have some discretion here, but we are gonna give three minutes tonight. The norm is being checked on, that when you get over five, they go to two minutes, but we have, I think, eight. We're gonna keep it at three. So Dr. McCullough has a timer set right here, so when you see your time, you can see it, please don't go over, because if you will, you'll be called out. So respect our time or respect everybody else's time. I know it's kinda hard sometimes to do that. You have your rules. If you're gonna speak, you have your rules. You know you can't call names and different things like that, so when you come up here, we'll give you your three minutes to address us and move on. And thank y'all for being here. First one is Mr. Joe Gordon.
And so what we're trying to do is try to go in order of how you filled it out, so that's kinda, so you'll kinda know what we're doing tonight.
Okay. So I'm Joe Gordon, and I am class 1963. I left Mount Vernon for a while, but Mount Vernon never left me. I'm gonna get another year here, raising the four-room shack across from the church north of Mount Vernon. I, Mount Vernon Independent School District has been important to my family, and I can tick off one thing in particular. My ag teacher got me a scholarship to go work on a college farm at Texas A&amp;M Commerce. So, and after me, there were six more that followed me through and got college education. Little trivia, who was the football escort for the 1962 homecoming parade? That would be me. And I performed a halftime kiss that brought Shane to my family. And I'll tell you about it later, but now's not the time. I was singled out for special recognition by my football coach. He asked me to stand up at the meeting, and he said that I had less athletic ability than anyone he had ever coached. And my name, and he said it's, I made the team because I was want to. So for my, you know, the rest of my school here, my name was want to. And want to, right now, wants to talk about this solar thing. So I object to the name Solar Farm. I think it gives farms and farmers a bad reputation. In fact, they replace farms. I have come up with a slick name called Solar Industrial Complex. It's what I, the acronym is SIC. And SIC is how I feel when I drive through Cunningham, Texas. SIC is how I feel when I go and drive 900 over by South Hill. And I fear that this sickness is contagious, because I have information that we've got a couple, I've come in here with a couple of solar farm projects going underway, but they have 48 more on the books for Texas, so we don't know where they're going. I question why we invest in organizations, companies that are...
You've got 10 seconds, Joe.
...going to produce. Here's the summary. We're getting it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks. We have Dr. Glade. We'll deal with the countdown.
All right.
All right. Here we go.
Everybody needs, everybody needs energy. I believe green energy is very good, and I believe it's the future. And I think the solar facilities are a very good fit for Franklin County. And I fear if, for whatever reason, these facilities decide they would rather move somewhere else rather than Franklin County, this is an opportunity I will not see again in my lifetime. And gee, these solar facilities, this is not strip mining, this is not fracking, this is not even windmills. It's hard to imagine how anybody would have objected to this, but, but yet here we are. And it's only human nature. People fear change, especially as we get older. Nobody likes to see things change. You, as the members of this board, leaders of the community, you have to have the compassion and the vision to listen to the concerns and the fears that people have about this and weigh that against the potential benefit for Franklin County, for the state of Texas, and even for the world, for today, but more importantly, for tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glade. Did you have that?
Okay. I'm here tonight to let my opinion be known about the solar panel project and the tax abatement for it. First off, this probably wouldn't even be considered had the government request to shut down all the lignite coal-fired plants like Monticello, Big Brown, and soon to be shut down Casey Plant. I can't understand how anyone could oppose this opposite opinion or option to go with solar panels. Right now, it's the only option to replace the coal-fired plants and stop the rollback, rolling blackouts across Texas. Take the instance of February 2021, which caused millions of dollars of damage and left families across the state in freezing temperatures without power. The farmers who have decided to do this did not do this choice lightly. It's their choice to do this on their own private property. After all, these individuals have put the blood, sweat, and tears into their property, and the benefits of putting property into the project will benefit their families for the next 40 years. It's their decision to participate, not the general purpose. There is way more farmland that's been taken up by housing developments and the solar panel projects. Every bit of this power is going to the grid. We're hearing a lot of noise about the water usage. This is out of the Energy Department of the, of the government. Water withdrawal declined by 90% by 2050 in the decarbonization scenario. The water savings result from the low water usage, low water usage of solar and the clean energy generations of other industries. The lands now are only taxed at a farm exemption rate, which each farmer will still continue to pay, and anything above that will be covered by the solar company. So even with the abatements, there is still a large increase of tax revenue, not only for the county, but for the school district as well. This company is already doing things above and beyond for the South Hill I S D, like building a U ramp greenhouse for the school. I was told the estimated revenue for the school was $34 million in the next 10 years with the abatement. This will take the education of our kids, including my own grandkids, in Mount Vernon I S D and Franklin County to a whole new level. Just imagine how our district could make necessary improvements across the district. In my opinion, the school board and county commissioners would be foolish to pass up the opportunity to help increase revenues for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Tunnick.
Thank you.
David Truesdale.
And I didn't state this at first, but we have a, I don't know, James, you call this a non-directional mic. This mic picks up everything, so when you're speaking up here, that mic picks up, and we are being filmed, so this will be on, on our website here in a couple of days.
Great, thank you, Matt.
Yes, sir. Good evening. My name is David Truesdale. I live on 1896, immediately adjacent to where there's solar farms going, so I don't know how it affects other people besides the tax base. I'm looking for an impact study. Has anybody done one on how, what this is gonna do? You can't build a building without doing this study. Has anybody done one? Is there one available? That's all I'm looking for. I want information. I don't want rumors. I don't wanna go on the internet and do research. I wanna see actual an impact study on how this is gonna affect me, affect my farm. Has anybody got an answer for me? I'd love to hear it.
So in public forum, the board does not...
Yes, sir. I understand.
Just making sure.
That's a rhetorical question.
Very good. Just making sure.
So I'd like to see that. I don't think this, I don't think this company came here for the benefit of this community. I think they came here because they knew that they could find land and do this. If this was good, they'd be doing it in Dallas. Dallas knows better.
Michelle Barnes.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Barnes. I live in Dyke, Texas. I'm at Vernon. You all know about the Dyke Solar Farm. We've been going against the solar farm going in our community for over two years now, but I have garnered a lot of information about solar and what it does to the community. And as the gentleman that has been speaking here today, your point, excellent. Right now, they don't even, our, our solar, proposed solar doesn't even have approval from the Army Corps of Engineers because of the water waste that are in the thing. They can't even get approval. They've been out there nine to 10 times. They can't get approval. And I just want to let the board know real quickly that right now, three months ago, a lawsuit was filed by some landowners somewhere in Texas against the Chapter 313 and the controller. Dyke residents who live around the solar complex that is proposed to go in have joined that lawsuit, so it's becoming a class action lawsuit against the school boards and the Chapter 313 abatements because these abatements are devaluing the land around the solar. And I agree, it's not a solar farm. I call it a solar industrial complex because they have power plants, they have inverters, they have batteries, they have all kinds of things. It's a power plant. It is not a farm. And there is a lot going on with this stuff. Right now, even insurance industries are thinking about not insuring houses that, of people who park their solar cars in the garages, there's fires happening from the scenes. Amazon just had fires on their distribution warehouses. Our own jail in Hopkins County had a fire from the solar panels. And now I'm finding out that there is now called runaway fires, thermal runaway fires from the batteries. They actually put out smoke in the community, and people have to stay indoors for one to five, one to three days until it's dissipated because it is toxic. So there's a lot of information you really need to get before you make a decision, because it will affect your community. Thank you.
Whitworth?
You all know about the Dyke Solar Farm. We've been going against the solar farm going in our community for over two years now, but I have garnered a lot of information about solar and what it does to the community. And as the gentleman has been speaking here today, your point, excellent. Right now, they don't even, our solar, proposed solar doesn't even have approval from the Army Corps of Engineers because of the water waste that are in the thing. They can't even get approval, they've been out there nine to ten times, they can't get approval. And I just want to let the board know real quickly that right now, three months ago, a lawsuit was filed by some landowners somewhere in Texas against the Chapter Three One Three and the Comptroller. Dyke residents who live around the solar complex that is proposed to go in have joined that lawsuit, so it's becoming a class action lawsuit against the school boards and the Chapter Three One Three abatements because these abatements are devaluing the land around the solar. And I agree, it's not a solar farm. I call it a solar industrial complex because they have power plants, they have inverters, they have batteries, they have all kinds of things. It's a power plant, it is not a farm. And there is a lot going on with this stuff. Right now, even insurance industries are thinking about not insuring houses that, of people who park their solar cars in the garages, there's fires happening from the scenes. Amazon just had fires on their distribution warehouses. Our own jail in Hopkins County had a fire from the solar panels. And now I'm finding out that there is now called runaway fires, thermal runaway fires from the batteries. They actually put out smoke in the community, and people have to stay indoors for one to five, one to three days until it's dissipated because it is toxic. So there's a lot of information you really need to get before you make a decision because it will affect your community. Thank you.
Whitworth.
Try to get through this pretty quick, I wrote some down so I didn't take too much time. I'd like to start by saying that I am not against anyone putting solar panels on their property, regardless of my issues with the impact to the environment or the possible impact on our local water resources. What I am against is a Chapter Three Thirteen corporate welfare subsidy for these multinational solar corporations, or any corporations for that matter. These solar corporations are already heavily subsidized by our federal and state governments, and I personally find it insulting that these companies have come to our small county asking for a tax break when they stand to make millions on this deal from federal subsidies alone. I also don't know, I also don't know why we would consider giving a tax break when these companies don't bring any benefit to our county as a whole. Yes, the landowners benefit and I'm happy for them. What does the county get? Three jobs paying forty-eight thousand dollars a year with no room for cost of living increases. And yes, I know the school district stands to make thirty-four million dollars, I believe it was. My question is, how much, how much would the school district get if we said no to the tax break and the companies decided to move forward anyway? And why are we considering a tax break when the money we would receive from said tax break wouldn't even pay off the district's current debt? These are just some of the problems that I have with the proposed tax break. The last thing I'd like to say is that there was a comment made last week about the bond election. Someone said, well, we tried to get y'all to approve the bond, and you didn't, so. I'm not saying that this comment was meant this way, but this is how I took it. It sounded to me like what was being said was, y'all didn't approve the bond, so now we're gonna do this. And that brings me to my last point. I believe most of the elected officials in this country have forgotten that they work for the people who elected them and not for their own interests or for lobbyists or corporations. They are elected by the people to the will of the people. And from what I've seen so far, at the very minimum, majority of the people in this county do not want a tax break for these solar companies. So I hope that the people's will is done and that this tax break fails. And all the people in this room, call and email your school board members and your elected officials and let them know how you feel. Hold them accountable, because if there's two things that elected officials understand is money and votes. Thank you.
Beth Hicks.
I am Beth Hicks, and I have forty years of service in our school district. That is, forty years of sponsoring students for trips, for bringing publications out here, for sponsorships and scholarships, and currently sponsoring five Mount Vernon students this past summer and into this year and this fall in the work-study program at NPCC. I believe in what you do, and I support this school. Please Google the Daphne Prairie, look at the land, which may soon be destroyed. If a tornado passes through the Daphne Prairie, Daphne Prairie, Franklin County, tons of photographs out there, you'll be blown away, and there are at least three videos. Environmentally, very well-recognized, and under your Three Thirteen rules, you're supposed to look at the economic impact of tourism as to what you're doing. If a tornado passes through, I had a lady come in today who had worked for N L in some other state, and she said the toxic waste that will be spread across the landscape will be phenomenally bad with all the chemicals. She said, what are you gonna do? I hadn't even thought about that. More and more, and we don't have the answers for this. I stand behind every statement I made in this newspaper. I have the facts, and if anything, unfortunately, I'm getting more and more people who come in and say, yes, that's true, here these fires are, we can't put out a battery fire. My friend and fellow lawyer, Brad Lowry, owner of Five Hundred Acres in this county, whose father was the president of this school board and served for twenty years, and then was the president of the Texas Association of School Boards, has sent a letter to you and to Superintendent Marshall, and he asked me if I would read it tonight. Because of the three-minute rule, I'll only read a small summary from it. But again, he thanks you for your service, and I thank you. I've been here many, many times, and I hope all of you know me, and I've sponsored you and your children and worked with your parents on scholarships. He's a member of the school board in Argyle, Texas. Is that the time I have left?
Yes, sir.
One minute, thank you. He says, I want to express my opinion about the request by solar companies for a tax break. Says, I was born in Franklin County, family here. He wants to return here when he's able to see that he's ready to retire. Brad's about sixty. His, some of his property is along the solar panel corridor. He's declined to rent, and he says he cares deeply about the quality of life here and the quality of his own land being impacted by these solar panels. He's very concerned. He says, I quote, "To be clear, I respect every landowner's right to do with his or her property as she pleases." He's going a little further than me. I don't want a hog farm immediately budding up to my land. But, he says, "There is still no good reason for a governing body to grant a tax break, give special treatment for a business that is going to take a lot more from the public to benefit a few." This isn't like Lowe's moving to town when we got tax breaks for bringing in industry, true industry. This is a different animal altogether. Granting the solar companies special treatment in the form of this tax break would be a can to pain them to come in and destroy our rural countryside.
Thank you, Beth Hicks.
Please object.
Mr. Swabel will be our last comment.
Hello, my name's Lyles Swabel. If I didn't fill it out, I figured you would know where I stood. So I oppose the solar complexes. You know, I've always been for the poor and for those in the county, those widows and everything. I always tried to vote for them. You know, the love of money is the root of all evil. And, you know, what about the rest of us? What about our food supply? What about us, for the cattle where they go, the corn, the wheat, bread, everything that we're gonna intake, what we need to survive and everything like that? As they find more and more studies about this, where they take the ground afterwards, it's depleted of a lot of the nutrients and can't grow things like it used to the crops and things. And they're doing more studies where they take quartz and coal raised in eighteen hundred degrees to make those solar panels. Plus, you have all the parts, the cables, everything, the batteries, everything from the start of the concrete to the end, takes more fossil fuel and the fossil coal and everything to build it than it would just burn it to make the electricity in the first place, so I approve that. I'm very changed here. Let's take the gas for us down to a dollar sixty a gallon.
President Sanders, President Sanders, I ended up with my sheep here if I take, can I speak?
Bring it on. Mr. Barker, this is next.
Sorry.
We'll, we'll talk about this after class.
I'm Ronnie Barker, Mount Vernon, long time. I just have one point, and giving the tax breaks is one thing for them, but to grant a waiver for them to cut their working people down to one from ten is, is not right. And that's like, those of you who play poker, that's like you've got the win in hand, and you let the people, the other guy you're playing with, lower his bet. They're locked in for whatever is what it seems like to me, and we don't have to give them anything else. This is what happened.
Moving on to item four, Consider Approval of Consent Agenda. We have it in our board book, any questions on that consent agenda? All right, if there is no further questions on that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided. Motion made by Linda, seconded by Robert, all four. That's seven oh. On to our action items. Item A, Consider Approval of Board Policy, D E C Local Revision to Remove Annual Attendance Incentive wording. Dr. McCullough.
Can I make sure of that?
Okay.
You have a copy of D E C Local Revision in board packet, and you will notice on page six of that revision that is striking through that annual attendance incentive that we had in the twenty-one, twenty-two school year construction. So all that is doing is revising that local policy to redact that from pre-issue.
Any questions for Ms. White on that? Okay. I make a motion that we approve the Board Policy, D E C Local Revision to Remove Annual Attendance Incentive wording. Do I have a second? Seconded by Leanne, all four. Seven oh. Item B, Consider Approval to Revise Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Three Stipend List to Add Behavior Adjusted Classroom Teacher and Aid Stipends.
Hey, I visited with Mr. Watson, and as you know, we have made adjustments and added a behavior adjustment classroom at the elementary campus. We also have a behavior adjustment classroom at the middle school. And with the increase of students that we're seeing with a need for that placement setting for instruction, we have added two stipends for consideration tonight. One is the behavior adjustment classroom teacher stipend. That is indicated on that first line. The second one is for any paraprofessional assigned to that behavior adjustment classroom unit. Will also receive that stipend on annual stipend, has extra duty distribution.
Any questions for Ms. White on that? At this time, we'll take a motion to revise the Twenty Twenty Two, Twenty Twenty Three Stipend List to Add Behavior Adjustment Classroom Teacher and Aid Stipends. Motion made by Brooke, seconded by Robert, all four. That's seven oh. Last action item, Consider Approval of Security Camera License, Three-Year Renewal from Zoology Solutions.
Mr. Adler's went out for bid, you see those on the second page of your board book. He received quotes from S H I, Zoology, Howard Technology, and C W, CDW. So the recommendation is for the licensing, three-year licensing for Zoology Solutions at fifty-two thousand nine eighty-four.
Any questions on that? Need a motion that we approve the quote submitted by Zoology Solutions as the best overall price for the district, which is fifty-two thousand nine hundred and eighty-four dollars. Motion made by Leanne, seconded by Josh, all for that. That's seven oh. On to our information items. Dr. McCullough, you got some info on the totals?
Yes, sir, as you see, we are up from this time last year, I believe. We were at fifteen thirty-three. When this was put together, we were at fifteen seventy-two. So thankfully, our enrollment is moving back up in a positive direction.
Okay. And then item B, Accountability Twenty Twenty Two District and Campus Ratings. That's why I asked you to go get us that one.
Okay, so you have a whole bunch of pages in your packet. And so I wanted, first and foremost, the first two pages are the summary, which I'll talk about, but I also wanted to include the data tables because as you can see, it's very convoluted and how those calculations are made. Our accountability manual is about two hundred and sixty-six pages on deciphering those calculations, so that's normally what we look at. But what I wanted to draw your attention to, obviously, we are very proud of our A rating as a school district, I'm very proud of our campuses and our administrative team. We've worked very hard, as well as teachers and students, to hold that. So I could not be more proud of them. Wanted to draw your attention to the campus ratings, as well as I indicated the distinction designations available to each of those locations. The district is only open to one distinction, and that is the post-secondary readiness. And our district distinction is actually based on the campuses. The campuses have to have fifty-five percent distinction qualification for us to get that. So just to let you know on that. For the elementary campus, we did receive the L A English Language Arts and Reading distinction. Also, those distinctions are based on campus comparison groups. So T E A looks at forty campuses that are comparable in size, distribution, with all of the indicators. So we are put in those groups with thirty-nine other campuses that are like those schools, and then we get the designation if we are in the top quartile for that. So where we earn those, we were in the top ten schools for that area. For the elementary campus, also, academic growth, as you can see, is obviously an area that Ms. Phillips will probably talk to you about. But I did want to let you know, that is one thing. Because we moved our fifth grade campus, our fifth grade to the middle school campus, we lose the growth from fourth to fifth. So that means all of our academic growth is measured for our fourth graders to see what gain they made from third to fourth grade. So, and obviously, that's a number that we have to look at. So as we focus on that area, the closing the gaps is looking at the students who hit meets, grade-level performance. So we've always said that it's really not about approaches anymore. Approaches was just satisfactory. It's where are students hitting meets and masters? And then what we also have to look at is keeping them at those levels year to year. Are we keeping them at meets, and then are they gaining and we're moving them to masters? So that's the goal, is On that closing the gaps, that also looks at fourteen student groups, all race, ethnicity, ego dis, special education, English learners, continual enrollers, and non-continual enrollers. So we actually get deemed on mobility. Students that leave us, go to other districts, come back to us, those can actually hurt us and disadvantage in those ways. So just wanted to kind of give you a bird's eye view of those, and they'll talk to you a little bit more on specific goals. But I'm very proud of them.
Item C, Campus Accountability Updates.
So Ms. Desiree, will you do elementary something, please?
Ms. White?
Yes, sir.
What rating is this school?
A.
An A rating?
We are an A rating in this school district.
So after this stuff I'm hearing on the news about all these people after COVID that aren't doing well, what'd you say we were rated at?
We are an A rating.
Ms. Phillips, how's it going?
We're doing great. Okay, so I'm gonna start out by talking about, at the end of the year, I had done a survey to both our staff and our community members. And so, in looking at that survey, I kind of wanted to talk to you first about the community and the parents. And we had eighty-eight community members or parents respond to that survey, so that's a pretty good number. And overall, seventy-seven percent were satisfied with the elementary school. And so I kind of wanted to share some of the positive things that was reiterated on the survey. So most really felt like the teachers were working hard, and they were passionate about students, and they demonstrated, they genuinely cared. And most felt that our campus was secure, and then it was evident that communication to families was important. Lots of positive feedback about our positive behavior incentive program that's going on at the elementary. And so, the areas of targeted growth. So fifty percent of our parents who completed this survey cited that they received positive messages or calls home. And so, that is one of our action plans this year, is that all of our staff members, including admin, are making at least five to six positive phone calls home a six weeks. And we're documenting that, and that's, that also, all of this is gonna tie into our star improvement goals. And so, that's really important in building those relationships with the parents, with schools and families. And one of the other areas of targeted growth was more offerings for our gifted and talented students. That will also kind of play in hand-to-hand in moving our students from meets to masters as well. And so some of the things that we are doing this year is we are gonna be implementing Destination Imagination for grades three and four. And we also have an enrichment period built into our schedule, but we're gonna really focus on that and make sure that those activities are higher-level Bloom, such as the applying, analyzing, evaluating, and creating. Another thing that parents wanted is more communication. So we are having monthly newsletters that are sent home, and we are really trying to have a greater presence on social media and really just allow other people in the community to see the great things that are happening at our elementary school. So looking at our teacher survey, teachers really, they wanted to increase the morale and the staff recognition, and so some things that we're doing with that, we're having a monthly culture calendar in which we're doing monthly activities to kind of show our gratitude and our appreciation to the teachers. We have a staff member in the spotlight each week. And game changer shout-outs, being a game changer is our theme this year, and so we have a Google forum set up where colleagues are actually able to shout out their colleagues and things that they're doing that's going above and beyond. And that is shared on our campus weekly newsletter that's announced. We have campus leadership meetings every week, where we handwrite three notes to different staff members each week. Another thing teachers wanted is more discipline. And so we are beginning a new behavior multi-tiered system of support. So we are beginning a new behavior multi-tiered system of support, similar to our RTI program that we already have at the elementary. And communication. And so we have remind, we have the weekly newsletters, they have the year-at-a-glance calendar, and then we have a shared dual calendar for teachers to say, communicate. So in reference to our star performance improvement plan, as Chandra stated, we've made huge gains at the elementary. And that, that's a huge testament to our staff and how hard they work. And not only that, but just them developing that growth mindset. Our focus has been on literacy. As you can see, we did receive the distinction in that area. But now we are going to, we're going to continue to focus on that area, but we're also moving our focus to math, as you can, you can see based on our data. And writing, especially with the new starter redesign that is focused on constructive response. So our target goal, and we're going to talk more about fourth grade. Like Chandra mentioned, we scored a C in the academic growth area. And to get it to a B, we've got to move our students from approaches to meets and meets to masters. So we're really going to work on that in our fourth grade. So one of our goals is that our fourth grade students will demonstrate an increase of eleven percent in meets performance on the star math assessment. So that's going to increase the percentage of our fourth grade students from meeting expectations from thirty-nine percent to fifty percent. And that's a pretty ambitious goal, but we're going to accomplish it. And then the way we're going to do that is we have weekly planning with instructional team using backwards and signs. And we have data meetings to discuss their CUAs and plan standards to spiral. So our low-performing standards, we're going to spiral those back in, in RTI. And our high-performing standards, we're going to really enrich those during that enrichment time. We are also going to have data forms where we're going to track each student's performance on their CUAs in comparison to their third-grade star data. And so we're going to look at that on each CUA, how are they performing in reference to how they did on the third-grade star? And adjust instruction accordingly. Again, this is going to help us with that growth measure that we're really trying to improve. We're going to provide targeted intervention, tutorials, and really have an increased focus on academic vocabulary. Our next goal is we're going to demonstrate an increase in masters performance on the fourth-grade star math assessment by three percent. So we're going to increase from twenty percent of students demonstrating mastery to twenty-three percent. And we're still using that, those same action steps. Except we're really going to utilize enrichment time to extend our thinking, differentiation of instruction, and our gifted and talented teacher is also going to be doing a lot with math enrichment as well. Also, to improve both these goals, it's kind of like Mr. Glover talked about, is improving our attendance. That's, our attendance rate last year was ninety-three percent. Our goal is to be ninety-five percent or better. And I don't know if you follow us on Facebook, but it's been a battle of the flags lately. So we're rewarding, we started out rewarding the class in each grade level that had the best attendance. But now we're going to have to order more flags, which is a great thing. Because just this last week, we had eleven classes with perfect attendance. That's amazing. In kindergarten alone, we only had two accesses. So.
That's huge.
That's huge. And so, I mean, garden flags, who would have thought? So those are some things that we are, we are doing. Other things, you know, we have intervention. We have a really strong RTI program at the elementary in Council Forty-five, Forty-five. We have our universal screeners that we use three times a year, our star data, our CUAs. We have RTI meetings every six weeks where we're monitoring the progress of all of our students. We, our tier-three intervention is really, really strong. We have some great interventionists working with students. One of our focuses is our tier-two intervention, which is in the classroom during the RTI walk. Our teachers, one thing that we're doing different this year is really trying to get them to exposure to high-quality instruction. And so they're going to, they're required to do a learning walk each semester. And so what that is, is they kind of talk to us, or they let us know like what they want to go see. And then they are going to go to another classroom and observe. We have our instructional coaches modeling lessons. And this year also that's different is we're really focusing on our T-test dimensions. So we're highlighting a dimension. And that, that took place in our beginning of the year professional development, and it'll happen again at each faculty meeting, where we really highlight an instructional practice that we want to see in the classroom, and that's what we're going. Our walkthroughs are targeted.
Good job, Desiree.
Do you have any questions?
Will you tomorrow tell your staff how grateful we are for them?
I sure will.
Get on that intercom or something, because we send emails, and Ms. Woodard, same thing, because we can't be there, but up here with these kids all day, we stick all this stuff on them and we never take nothing away, and we know that, and we appreciate y'all.
I will let them know, they just left.
Ms. Woodard? Well, I want to start by, I guess, tooting the horns of the staff for the middle school, because they did receive an A rating. They received distinctions in ELAR, reading, mathematics, social studies, comparative academic growth, post-secondary readiness, and comparative closing the gaps. The only thing they did not receive in was science, which we are putting a lot of focus on. We've made some changes in staff and working to improve that as well. Because we would like to see all of those distinctions, obviously. Our goals are also include increasing meets and masters, getting those levels up, not just approaches and passing, but we want to get the meets and masters up as well. And so some of the things that we continue to do are RTI, our intervention, and our acceleration. Last year, using the acceleration and the RTI, there was, like an example, in math, eighty percent of the students who did the RTI and the tutorials went from where they hadn't passed a test to where they did pass. So it was a, it was a big help. So the things that we're doing there, we're just trying to expand upon. As pointed out earlier, Leslie is our interventionist. She's been working really hard on getting the students, I guess, recognized for their improvements and to also talk them in areas in which they need some additional assistance in, to get them to that same goal. And obviously, we would like a much greater percent than eighty percent as well. We do that through leaps, through our LEAP program and through for and after-school tutorials, as well as inside the classroom when it's, when it's appropriate, to try to get some additional interventions for them. One of the things that we'd like to do to get the meets and masters up is, of course, work more on our GT program, not just for, we find it's very important for all students, not just for GT students. If you're working on improving their ability to think beyond just the recall, then, then they're naturally going to grow and get to that meets and masters. So our teachers, a lot of our teachers are attending GT training. We also have a lot of changes in the STAR test coming up this year. Lots of different items, including things like written responses again, something different for our kids. So our teachers are attending a lot of professional development to be able to enhance how they train and how they teach kids so that they're better prepared for that upcoming changes. We do, in try, in trying to do all this, we're trying to also bring up our thoughts about school. I think Mr. Glover hit it on it very well. It's, it's just everywhere, not just in high school. Wanting kids to appreciate and like being in school, so giving them lots of great opportunities to find things fun in class. I will say, I've been very blessed with assistant principal and dean, that very, very helpful, and they go out and find ways to make sure that the students are excited about doing things right. They're rewarded for good behavior, they're rewarded for the things that they do, so many students do naturally. And so those students are rewarded as well, and gives them an opportunity to be excited about coming to school. And something for students to occasionally, just have a bad day, gives them something to look forward to in, okay, I need to fix that and get on the right path to, you know, behavior that'll allow them to have these fun activities as well. We are also looking at making sure that we spotlight students and teachers through our monthly student of the month, teachers of the month, et cetera. We also do that and allow other teachers and other students to spotlight other people. So students can spotlight a teacher, students can spotlight another student. Teachers can do the same thing, spotlight a student and another teacher. And so we find that that's really a positive, gives a very positive feel, and it makes it enjoyable for them to be at school. And then I also want to talk about our attendance. We, we were at ninety-five percent, and we want to be at ninety-seven percent. When I looked last week, it was still at ninety-five percent. We have a lot of COVID instances with stomach bug also. So we've had several, attendance-wise, and I'm sure has changed that somewhat, but we are still working on trying to improve it. We make a daily call as well to, to homes to find out, you know, if students need anything, if they're sick, if they, if the parents need any additional help with that, sending work home, et cetera. And also just to make sure if, if we can, you know, let them know that we do, we do worry about their children as well. And check on them and see if we can encourage them to be at school as much as possible. We also, in working on the GT classes, I failed to mention, we've also added some honors classes this year. And would hope, or the goal is to add more next year. It does create kind of a scheduling nightmare, I will say. Wasn't quite as easy as I thought it would be, simply because we have a lot of students. But I, I feel that in talking with the students, they're very excited about the fact that, that they can get there. And I've even had a couple of them ask me, okay, how do I get there? What do I need to do to get there? I want to be in that honors class next year. So I feel like it's a positive thing as well. Any questions? Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Ms. Woodard. Right, just looking at item C, nope, item B.
So this is just to give notice that our October board meeting is scheduled for, was originally scheduled for Monday, October the tenth, which is the second Monday. That is a school holiday for Columbus Day. We do not normally have board meetings on a school holiday, so we are moving that October board meeting back to October sixth. Thursday, October sixth is when the October board meeting will be.
Five fifteen?
Five fifteen. Right here at the lecture hall.
I got to pick that. Okay. All right, at this time, the board will now convene into closed session pursuant to the Texas, following Texas government codes. Government code five-five-one-oh-eight-seven to discuss commercial or financial information regarding business prospects with which Mount Vernon ISD may conduct economic development negotiations. And Texas government code five-five-one-oh-seven-four, consult with legal counsel as necessary to address legal concerns, implications, and questions regarding the posted agenda items. And lastly, the Texas government code five-five-one-oh-seven-four to discuss personnel matters. Brooke, it is now six-twenty-one in the PM. Thank y'all. Eight-thirteen, convenes back into open session. Dr. McCullough, do we have a personnel report?
We just need to acknowledge one resignation, and that is for Megan Belter, captain of your worker, as the only personnel report I have tonight.
Okay. Any further business?
No, sir.
There's no further business, we are adjourned at eight-fourteen PM.
Thank you very much, folks.